Gotta figure out how to duck under this. How far down do I have to go?
A little bit more, sit on the other side.
I like the right.
Yeah, there's five.
No, I usually sit back there.
Well, I don't think we're gonna have a lot of people today, so if you come sit up front.
I'm up front.
Front as you're gonna get.
What?
You're as in front as you're gonna get.
That's right. Unless I change my mind.
Is it six o'clock? That looks like. We got five fifty-nine on the computer. Five fifty-nine on the phone. If anybody wanted to do public forum. Okay. At six o'clock. Good evening, everybody. It is Thursday, December fourteenth. It is sixteen PM. Will everybody rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you, everybody, for joining us. And for all call, we are missing Lee. He is out of town. So there will be just the four of us. We would like to move on to adopting the agenda. Does anybody have any questions before we adopt the current agenda or any changes that we can make? I do need to add one thing. I would like to add Sandra Byrd to the line six under new business for the EDC application. It is not on the agenda itself, so.
I think she was planning commission for Sandra.
Was that what it was? I have it.
It does sound.
Oh, I'm sorry. Planning commission. Okay. I apologize. I would like to add number eight and put Sandra Byrd for a planning commission under new business. So I'd like to make a motion to do that, I guess.
Can we ask, ask under number five?
Sure. I don't see why not. Yeah.
Let's do that one.
It's a separate action item. I mean, it's up to you. I wish I could do that. I'm just thinking you should separate. We'll keep it at eight, but.
I would make a motion that we add Sandra Byrd's application of the planning commission as agenda item number six and move six and seven down.
Okay.
Just to keep kind of the consent theme there.
Okay. I'll second that. Any discussion? Are we all right with that? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any other adjustments we need to make? Okay. I'd like to make a motion to adopt tonight's agenda. Do I have a second? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Moving on to adopting the consent agenda. Is there any questions on our consent agenda tonight?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to pull off staff reports for discussion.
Okay. Sorry, Troy, did you say Paul?
Yeah, let's just say Paul.
Okay. Anything else I would like to make an adjustment to?
I don't, for me.
Okay. So would we move that to the agenda then and discuss? I would assume we have to, Fritz. If we want to discuss all staff reports.
And take it off.
And take it off the consent agenda? Would we put that as a line item under?
You would, but it would be the approval. So you put them all on and you can, I suppose, sort. And then after you're done sorting, you approve or not approve. But that's under an approval part of it. And I suggest you do it.
Okay.
Perhaps right after public forums, so it stays.
Okay. Sure. Okay. We'll move that after public forum. We don't have a public forum, so.
Okay.
Yeah. Approval of the consent agenda minus discussion of the staff reports. Can I get a motion and a second?
I'll make the motion.
A second.
All right. Any other discussion? All in favor approving the consent agenda minus the staff report, say aye.
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 All right. We can go. We do not have a public forum, so we can discuss the staff reports.
Right. And I really just have one. If I could get the page number for for the staff reports, where they start.
They start at number nineteen.
Thank you.
Is it eighteen?
Eighteen, eighteen, no, library report.
Yeah.
So the staff reports are nineteen.
Yep, nineteen.
Thank you.
Yep.
I want to just thank the staff that, you know, took the time to do staff reports. I think it's important that they communicate directly with the people and the council this way in open, honest correspondence. I read through all of them and what I wanted to make a note of just tonight, real quickly, it won't take a lot of time, but I want to acknowledge the staff report from our zoning administrator, Elizabeth Potts. I went through this. I looked at it very closely. I highlighted a lot of things, a lot of things that she pointed out. And the first thing I wanted to mention was in the opening paragraph where she said, "My intention with the following pages is not to talk down on previous staff. The goal is to make a clear vision of what the situation is and how to work with the council commission on residents and business owners. I strongly believe we should move forward the best we can with the contents that we have." And I think that's important that she point that out. I think we, I think, I think people take criticism for looking back at the previous administration. And I don't think that's fair. I think we need to, I think for this council and definitely for the staff, we need to point out the situation that we were handed. Whether it was good or bad, that's irrelevant. But if the public and the council and the city staff really want to forge a path going forward, we need to find out where we're at and what we were left with. And I just wanted to point out this letter. I want to encourage the people to read it, the staff report from Elizabeth. She does a very good job of explaining what, what she's run into, what she's had to deal with. And I think everybody would have a better understanding of what our new staff is going, going through, what they've had to deal with and and probably be a little more supportive of what they, what they have and what they've got to do. The nice thing, I thought was really good, there's a lot of things in here, a lot of issues that she's had to deal with, and that means the rest of the staff has had to deal with it too. She closes very positively, however. Page twenty-six, "We have a lot of new and amazing staff in the office. I think this is totally true. I guarantee," she says, "every single one of us is working hard and doing the best we can do for the city." I think this is also true. "We work great as a team. We help each other out when we can and across training." I think council members and politicians in general have this idea that we think we're important. And we are in the effect that we have to make decisions. We have to make decisions on and for the people that voted for us. And that's our responsibility. One of the best things I think this council did is hire, hire the new staff that we've got. I think I'm very excited about the staff that's here and how they are working together. And I think one of the main things for them to do was recognize where they're starting from and what they were left with. And I think Elizabeth's letter or her staff report does a very good job of pointing that out. And I would just encourage people, including the council, if you haven't taken the time to read it, please do so, and you'll have a better understanding of not only where we are and what we were left with, but what we need to do going forward.
Thank you, Troy. Larry, would you like to comment at all?
No, I wouldn't.
Okay. Tim, anything?
I would just like to encourage, I think you do, and this other staff do, a couple of things in here. Make sure if you need resources to ask, that would go for any staff. And if you do feel as though you're not being treated fairly, and this is something that I talked to the staff about too, when, when they were all kind of in the room at one time as personnel liaison. You're not a punching bag and you need to be, you need to be treated respectfully by all, whether it be public or council, other staff, including myself. If you feel as though something needs to be reported, you should do so. And Larry and I, as liaisons, personnel liaisons, are ready and willing to hear those. If you're not comfortable and you feel as though you can handle it yourself, great. But don't feel as though you're all there alone.
Thank you.
Yeah, just, you know, to comment on a positive note, you guys are doing a great job. And it's gratifying to see you doing, doing positive things for the city and moving us forward.
We talk all the time. I'm up here as much as I can, so. I know I was already up here today and said I was really impressed with everybody having a staff report. And this is probably the first packet that you all have done that, and I think it's amazing. And, you know, heckling with everybody said, "Thank you." And, you know, you can always call or text or, you know, I'll be up here every other hour, so, sorry. I'm just kidding. Thank you, guys. I really appreciate it.
I'll be here the hours.
So, anything else you'd like to say?
Thank you.
Okay, yeah, thank you. So let's go ahead. We'll have to motion and second to approve our staff reports. I'll make a motion that we approve the staff reports.
A second.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay. We can move on to old business here. So we're gonna move on to number one, would be Kevin Gruber's approval of a wage increase. Part of his hiring, we did say after a six-month review, we'd give the dollar raise. We had a six-month review an hour ago, and so it went very well. That's pretty much all I can say, because it wasn't, it was chosen to be a closed meeting. But we'll need a motion and a second to approve the dollar increase for Kevin.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, second.
Okay. Any discussion?
Yeah, I just want to make note that part of his performance, our hiring agreement did call for a six-month review, which he received a dollar an hour pay period if he successfully had a successful performance review. That increases a dollar an hour, and it will be retroactive back to the beginning of the pay period following September fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, which would have been his six-month anniversary. And I think he's fulfilled every obligation in his agreement. So that kind of closes the book on that. He'll have another review in six months or after one year in service, so just wanted to let everybody know that.
Hey, he has earned it, so. Troy?
Nope.
Okay. All right, well, let's go ahead and vote. All those in favor of the dollar increase retro to September fourteenth pay periods, say aye.
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 All right. Next, old business is a follow-up from November thirteenth council meeting. We had some questions on the expenditure report. Michelle reached out to Brad, and she kind of put all that information into the packet. Brad's been a wonderful resource from Michelle since she's kind of taken over. So we appreciate everything that she's done and he has done. I told her she did not need to be here tonight. She wanted to go home with her puppy and her kids. I said, "Please do." So I guess, any questions on what we got? We can take notes. If we can't answer tonight, we can have Michelle answer for us and send another email as well, so. All certain.
Sure, yeah, sure. I want to thank Michelle for reaching out to Brad. It looks like she had to try from her email. At least she contacted him twice, so I'm glad, I'm glad that he got back to her. I went through this report, and it looks fantastic. There's nothing, I mean, everything matches up. It's not hard. You know, it's exactly what we need, is the accurate information that we should, that council should have and that the people should have. So, thank you again. It's great. It was like a breath of fresh air. I couldn't, I couldn't leave it. It was just great. I just went through spot checking different, you know, everything balanced. It was perfect. So it sounds like it's just picking the end of the month instead of the current date to get this report accurate. I did go to the fund balances, the cash fund balances. Those still seemed off to me. That's the ones we just got for this report. So I guess my request would be that whatever we did for the month, for these budget expenditures, can we just apply it to the cash fund balances, so those match up as well?
Yeah, I agree. I spoke to Michelle as she was leaving today, and we found one other little peculiarity with the report, just a little checkbox that she noticed was on there, and it changed the numbers for some reason, and it shouldn't have. So she is dating in and trying to make sure that the reports that we're getting are useful and accurate. So applaud her for that.
Larry?
It's great to get the information so quickly and so accurately, and kudos to Brad and Michelle.
I did talk with Michelle too, because I had some questions on the reports in the past. And she did share with me that she's learning that we can also have different reports done by Banyan, and she's reached out to Banyan as well, and they're gonna train and help her find different reports that we might be able to use that make more sense to work on site. So I know she's been working with two different sides to really pick this up, so just FYI, she was here burning midnight oil as she's been starting. So I told her to stop and take a deep breath, so she doesn't burn out. But she is really digging in, and I think we're gonna see some new reports. So if there's some stuff that she runs by us as council, if you'd like to see that in the packet too, just make sure that you let her know when, when she gets to that, so.
I'm assuming the cash fund balance report is Banyan as well? Okay.
It is.
Yeah.
Okay. I told her I would run in and sit down with her two and go over. There are canned reports and there are custom reports, and a lot of the custom reports date back to previous, multiple treasures, so to clean that up, I think it's gonna be helpful for her to just focus on what, what she needs and what we need.
Yeah, thank her again for doing this. It's just, it was great.
Any other discussion? Okay. Once she watches this meeting tonight, when it gets posted or tomorrow, she'll like to hear it.
You assume she's gonna watch this.
I'm kidding. All right, we can find number three then. Number three is following up on the ARPA expenditure for balancing the pit pumps from Tri-State Pump. Michelle did work with Brad to get everything in here to kind of show where we're at with it and how it kind of flowed. So is there any questions on what we have on the packet regarding the ARPA money and the pit pumps? Troy?
Sure. So we have, it looks like invoices and checks from two thousand and twenty-two, that's correct?
Yes.
Anything prior to that?
She didn't have anything prior to that. And then I signed a check for, because we got pumps, and so we paid the other half. And so we just did that this, what, two weeks ago.
Okay. Okay. No, thanks to Michelle again for, for work on this. I think this is, this is the reason I've asked for the ARPA project and expenditure report, because that information from two thousand and twenty-one and two thousand and twenty-two, that was all ARPA money, that was federal money, and we have to disclose how that was, that was spent. And I should, if anybody in the staff needs any information, I believe we will be required now that we spent this in two thousand and twenty-three to fill out the same report by April thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-four. But we've got time to do some checking on that.
That's my understanding as well.
Larry?
Well, I'm glad to see this finally put to bed.
Tim?
No, it's clear, concise, pretty clear on what the dollars received were and what they were expended on. Matches what, what I had heard previous councils and what I understood the facts to be.
I just was glad the pumps mattered, can't get there forever. So I can't believe how some of this stuff takes two years to get, so, or a year and a half, so. I've seen this, so I don't have any questions. I was asking questions when it came through when I was up here, so if there's no other questions, we can move on. Okay. Number three, so we have to approve Resolution twenty-three dash eleven dash zero one. This is delinquent utilities certified to the county. We already went through this at the last meeting, but we didn't do it in resolution form, so the county would not accept it. They've been gracious enough waiting for us to get it done tonight. So she needs the resolution that's in the packet. And so after tonight, we hopefully will approve the resolution. Any of the delinquent bills will be certified through the county and put on taxes for next year of those individuals, but they need the resolution, so I'll sign that tonight before I leave. So Sherry can get that off to them.
So I will make a motion that we approve Resolution twenty-three dash eleven dash zero one to certify delinquent account balances to the county for property taxes payable in two thousand and twenty-four.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Any discussion? Troy, any questions?
No, I'm glad we're moving forward with this. It's good.
Okay. Yeah, for sure. It's been a lot of work on the staff, so. Larry, you have any?
No discussion.
Okay. Tim, do you?
Okay.
Let's go ahead and vote then on approving Resolution twenty-three dash eleven dash zero one. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Number five, our next resolution is going to approve the final two thousand and twenty-four budget. Resolution is twenty-three dash twelve dash zero zero. I need a motion and a second.
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion on the final two thousand and twenty-four budget? We did have our truth of taxation meeting. We had a few folks show up. We really appreciate that. I think we had really good discussion. Had some questions on it. We had a lot of questions also on property tax value and, and hopefully those individuals that were concerned about the property tax value, they went to the county meeting after we were done at six o'clock, or six twenty. But we didn't have a lot of people. We had probably about eight to ten people here. And just a few questions, so. Everybody worked really hard here. We did get it down. Again, I want to applaud everybody up here that, you know, went through it. We really did go through it as much as we could to try to lower it, because the sticker shot when it first went out was not fun to look at for any of us, so. Troy, do you have anything that you would like to add or ask or question?
No, don't comment at this time.
Okay. Larry?
Well, I would like to say that the Finance Committee and the City Council worked really hard and, and came up with, you know, the budget for two thousand and twenty-four. I would apologize for not being that big a part of it due to personal commitments, but those that did work on it did a great job.
Tim?
No, I concur. The sticker shot would be what was proposed. Thankfully, we were able to work hard and get it down, so I'm fairly pleased with where we ended up.
Okay. Let's go ahead and vote then. All those in favor of approving the two thousand and twenty-four final budget, Resolution twenty-three dash twelve dash zero zero, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. New business. We are gonna move on to number one. It's a CUP for four hundred Military Road. And I'm gonna go ahead and let Elizabeth take us through our last meeting regarding this. And we'll go from there.
Sure. Thank you, Brandon. So today we have an applicant for a short-term rental conditional use permit. His name's Joseph Heinem. He's applying for property at four hundred Military Road. There were five public comments between written comments and a public hearing opposed, and the public hearing prior to this in opposition to the approval of the in permit. All required notifications were mailed and published. The subject property is a small town with a heritage preservation overlay. The property is located within Angel Hill, south of First Street and west of Colby Street, a military road. Properties within three hundred feet of four hundred Military Road are residential use, with the exception of the Minnesota State Park Land to the southwest of the subject property. The property has a four-bedroom, two-bathroom house, a detached garage, and a small accessory building. The applicant intends to rent out the four-bedroom house for short-term rental when it's not used by their own family. The garage and accessory building are not to be used as dwelling or short-term rental. A three hundred and sixty-five day moratorium on short-term rental applications was passed by City Council on November thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. The moratorium is applicable to any conditional use permit application submitted after November thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Heinem's complete application was received on November sixth, two thousand and twenty-three. We received a lot of questions on that, so just wanted to emphasize that Fritz cleared us to go ahead and go through with this application as well. Let's see. For some applicable zoning requirements and proposed findings of facts, short-term rentals are allowed as a conditional use permit within the small-town zoning district per Section two thousand zero zero four of the City, of the City of Taylor's Falls zoning ordinance. The Heritage Preservation Overlay Zoning District states that the conditional uses are those of the underlying zoning district. In this case, the small-town district is the underlying zoning district. The applicant meets all requirements of Section two thousand zero two zero, bed and breakfast, and short-term rentals of the zoning ordinance. They also meet the requirements of Section one thousand zero zero eight, conditional uses, which are the general requirements. And they also meet the requirements of Section one thousand zero zero eight, specific requirements. So these are all of the requirements outlined in the zoning ordinance. After thorough evaluation of each one, I decided from a zoning perspective that the applicant does qualify for approval. So with that, approval is my recommended action. I have in the staff report the exact words that I put into the proposed conditional use permit. So I recommend City Council makes a motion to approve the proposed conditional use permit application using the findings of fact and staff, in the staff report with the following conditions. One, the applicant will adhere to the applicable requirements for conditional use permits found in Section one thousand zero zero eight in the zoning ordinance. Two, the applicant will adhere to the applicable requirements for short-term rentals found in Section two thousand zero two zero in the zoning ordinance, with the exception of, A, the conditional use permit will not require the owner to occupy the dwelling to operate the short-term rental. This would be consistent with every other conditional use permit we've done for short-term rentals since I've been here. Number three, the applicant shall provide contact information to anyone within three hundred and fifty feet of the property. The contact information. The contact information kept shall include an owner of the property and the representative who is designated to be within a half an hour of the property. Four, the applicant shall have a representative or themselves be within a half an hour of the property who could respond to complaints, shall enter rise. Planning Commission had a very similar recommendation, just slightly different wording on that, on December fourth, two thousand twenty-three. Um, just to elaborate, uh, Joe's family lives over the thirty-minute threshold away, but he does have somebody who would be getting to the property who is fifteen minutes away, so we're just going to have both of them have the confirm, contact information out there. Um, and I'm happy to answer any questions within the memorandum.
Thank you, very much. I've been going right to left, I'm going to go left to right, so.
Kevin going off the same theme, it's very well done report, I really don't have any questions.
Larry?
Uh, no, everything appears to be in order, and, uh, I would go with the recommendation of both the planning commission and our zoning administrator.
Troy?
No comment as well, other than, uh, thank you, uh, Elizabeth for all your hard work on this, and, uh, and the planning commission for, uh, a lively debate and discussion, um, and, uh, and just being proactive, uh, looking ahead, I think we had some, there were some good discussions going on at that meeting, and, uh, everything looks good, it looks good for the future. I think there's going to be some really hard work done, and this, this shines a light again on what, what we and the city staff were left with, and this is basically the, the zoning ordinances and updating those and getting those worked on, and that's going to be hard work, but, thank you, everybody.
Yeah, I, I'd like to say thank you for all my hard work you've done. Planning Commission, thank you, I know they're not here, and also Joseph, thank you for your service, I appreciate it. Um, but yeah, I, I was there before, so my questions were answered while we were there.
I guess I do have one question, um, knowing the Gauls who lived there previously, the, the home is, um, has access, uh, ADA compliance kind of things, but that is about the only one I think we have that for a short-term rental that actually has access like that. Do you plan on keeping that in place?
We do, yes.
Cool.
So, yeah, should we continue that?
Nice, thank you.
I've got one more, because I noticed in, um, in one of your reports, uh, Elizabeth, that you, floor plan was not, uh, disclosed or something to that effect, number seven, I think Elizabeth will. What is that, what does that mean?
Yeah, they, just a floor plan of the house, um.
Was it security reasons?
Yeah, just to have it, so I worked it there, and we would have floor plans required for permits, and, but we would scan those separately and save them, um, because it was kind of a, a danger or threat for the public to know the exact floor plan of your house, you know, for security reasons, people breaking in on their way around. Um, so in, in this case, I hold it, because it's really not applicable to anything about the conditional use permit. There's no really use for us to have the floor plan.
So is that standard practice, or is that something that you're introducing here in Taylor's Falls? But, I mean, it, it, I've noticed that you wrote, Anne wrote it.
Yeah, yeah, and I'm thinking in the, I can look it up in the ordinance, but it, it does say like any other information that is required by the zoning administrator, so it might, maybe it was a judgment call, Fritz, was there anything wrong with that?
No, it was a judgment call, and usually when that's done, it is separated, as you indicated, so it doesn't, it isn't actually a public, a piece of public data. It is sometimes useful, if you have a fire department that can pull that stuff up, if they're going to a fire at that location, that very typically is the reason why that stuff's kept online, so they know where everything is, um, but is it necessary for the approval of zoning, you know? And if somebody really objected to that, I think you'd have a hard time justifying it.
Yeah, and you did submit it, so we wanted to keep it on record if we can, um, but I just figured it's.
Ms. Brandon, I ask if you, is there any others on record, or is this anything that you're aware of, or with the fire departments? Do they have it?
Uh, I don't know what kind of, um, file organization the fire department has. We don't really blend our, our files with them, we, we definitely could if we have the information, but to my knowledge, no, we don't really work with them on files.
Ms. Brandon, there's really no reason to keep it, I mean, that would be the reason why you'd have it.
Okay.
Yeah, he indicated how many bedrooms, and even, even then, that's really not, uh, a zoning thing that would be more of the health department question.
Okay.
Good question, Troy.
Just curious, thanks.
It, it's fairly difficult in a lot of areas, I'm not sure about municipal, but, um, I, I know in the healthcare industry, we never publicized our floor plans because just that, the safety and security reasons, sadly.
Um, any other questions up?
No, thank you.
Joseph, would you like to say anything?
Um, no, just appreciate the time.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, well, let's go ahead, um, and vote to approve the CUP for four hundred Military Road. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, very much. We had the motion, well, I don't remember, I have to be honest with you, I think Troy, you seconded, right?
I think I made the motion.
Okay, yeah. Sorry, yeah, I think you seconded, I'm pretty sure, usually I write it down.
There was no dissenting vote, so sure, I'll second.
All right, uh, moving on, we are going to approve our annual renewal of the liquor and tobacco licenses. I got, I have to say, Sherry? Thanks for jumping in so quickly on that and dragging it over to the Sheriff's Department and getting it signed. That was amazing, we're ahead of the game, so thank you so much, um, for getting all that together. But we'll do a motion and a second to approve these, and then we can discuss anything that we need to. Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion, we approve the liquor and tobacco licenses.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I'd just like to remind, um, the council, um, that in the past, this past year, we discussed going over our fee schedule and updating that as, as we deem necessary. This takes the tobacco and liquor license out of the way for two thousand twenty-four and moves it into two thousand twenty-five, which is fine. I, I did some comparisons around, um, the communities that surround Taylor's Falls, at least in Minnesota, I should say. And for these licenses, we're not far off. I mean, they do range a little bit, but, um, the one that was a little bit out of line was the wine-only license, but, um, I gotta believe the, the wine, the two wine licenses that we have in Taylor's Falls, their volumes aren't what others would be, and we don't really want to stifle them having that and create a, a burden on them, so, um, it's not a significant amount of money that we'd earn off of these anyway, so I don't see any reason from a fee perspective not to move forward.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Larry, anything?
Everything appears to be in order.
Okay.
Thank you, Sherry.
Yeah, thank, thank you guys, I appreciate it. All right, uh, let's go ahead and, uh, vote to approve the annual renewal of the liquor and tobacco license. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, on to number three, um, this was brought up to us from Kevin, a discussion on closing government in West Government Street for snow removal during and after the storms. I don't know if we have to motion, I think we can just tell them to do it, but it's good discussion.
Yeah.
I know I was up here that first snowstorm that we got, um, right after the Lichen Festival, and, and we were up here decorating, and Kevin showed up, and I asked him what he was doing, and he didn't even know that people were sliding down the hill, um, and so part of that is we're going to do our best to let him know when the community center is being used moving forward, we're going to have, have schedule to him, but, um, he shared with us how dangerous it is for him to be out there, or anybody to be out there, when it's slippery, um, you know, for them to try to remove snow and/or just close it down until it's become safe, so, um, that, that's what he shared with me in person, and then he wrote it up, so.
I guess, I have a, just a quick question, and maybe, clearly didn't see it, but living, being a resident of West Government Street, how far up West Government Street does he plan to go? Is it all of West Government, or?
Yeah, he's gonna, they're gonna kind of play it by ear to get a good plan down, but from the community center up, they were going to try to maintain the parking for the Methodist Church.
Okay.
Um, so it's really just that little bit around the corner.
That's it?
Yeah.
And that's where he would stop?
Yeah.
Okay.
The one thing we thought about, fire, because the Folsom House is gone.
Right, right.
So, um, Kevin and I talked about that, and, um, from a fire accessibility, and they can have special events there too, so we're going to have to maintain the road, just to allow fire to get in there, if nothing else. Uh, Folsom House is closed for the season, I forget, October or whatever, um, but they mentioned special events, so we'll keep in contact with them, same as the Methodist Church and community center.
Lichen Festival would be the.
So, yeah, um, so we're going to have to maintain it, we may just close it off for a period of time and then reopen it when we feel it's safe, um, or we might leave it closed. So, kind of play it by ear, it's not a, you know, a priority street, because there are so many different ways to get up Angel Hill and off, so, um, I think this will be just a test winter, we'll see how it goes. If anybody has concerns or issues, they should just call Kevin and talk to him.
No, actually, I, I think it's going to be safer for me, right, walking into work. I mean, that's when the ice melts up when they, when they do that, but, um, no, I think it's great. It's a dangerous section.
So, are you saying it's just going to be closed during snow events, until it can be maintained, or?
That's one option, yeah, um, like I said, we'll have to maintain it to some degree regardless of whether it's open or not. If we're able to get it cleared up, we get a warm spell and everything clears up, and we want to hold it up, I think they may. But, um, if things are going well, then we don't really even need to open it, it'd be easier not to.
There's so many, yeah, there's so many access points to first that.
Yeah. So, yeah, I, I don't know, as we need a motion.
We'll just say it's a heck of a ride even when it's clear.
Uh, but if council's fine, I, I can take it back to Kevin and.
Do you think we'll have any flooding issues?
I almost hope so.
Yeah, I, I don't think we need a motion or anything like that, it's a really good idea. That is, okay, awesome. Let's move on to number four, uh, it's a bid for hazardous tree removal from Vital House Tree Service. This one we do have to approve, so I guess I'll need a motion and a second, and we can discuss.
I'll make the motion.
All right, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Troy, do you have any questions?
Yeah, just kind of can, can you fill us in, what, what went on here?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I wish I could, this is one item I wasn't able to get ahold of Kevin in advance on, so I don't have a whole lot of issues or answers for that. I do know they've been going around looking for trees that are posing a, uh, more or less a safety hazard, and they're trying to, uh, do that, this would be, I think, the, the second round that they've done, um.
So the address here is not the issue, the, this isn't, uh, this is a decision the city made, made?
Correct, it would be on city easement or property.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, um, sometimes we'll coordinate with the homeowner if they have trees as well, um, but these would be city responsibility and not the responsibility of, uh, of Excel either.
Larry, anything?
So, um, it's a thousand four hundred twenty-five dollars to cut in all.
Yep.
Three seventy-five to, to chip the spumps, and a hundred dollars to have, um, have chips leave the flat, so this was the only bid we got?
Yeah, I know I asked Kevin in the past, I haven't asked him this one, but I know I asked him in the past if he had anybody else, um, that he could get, because we want to do at least two bids. He said that he's tried a few others, and he doesn't ever hear back from them. Um, is this, uh, this is Jared, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, he, he calls back and comes and gives us quotes, so, um, we're going to continue looking for others. Um, I do have one that I just gave him, um, but we can't make him call us back, so that's where we're at. He did share with me there's some other trees that, uh, they have noticed that they're hitting with the plow too, um, when, when they have been out, and so we're going to have some more tree work done, um, but he has to work with the property owner, they got to figure out that location's easement amount, because he said the streets are a lot smaller here than what he was used to from his previous location, so, he doesn't know how far he can go in, but he doesn't want to damage anybody's yards, um, so that's kind of what he said he's really trying to, to do, and so, I don't know about this one, even, even, usually he texts or calls or run into him, I'm here, and he never said anything about this, so.
Oh, Jeremy and his business, they do really good work, so I'm, I'm confident that they do this well.
So, I guess we have two options, we could approve this, we could say contingent on getting one more, um, quote if we want to, um, and if anybody knows of anybody else that might be interested to give us a quote, please let us know. But, uh, I would, I guess I'd map where we just get this one and then try to see if somebody else can be on call too, so we can get two quotes, just for audit reasons and just for, you know, sake reasons.
Knowing Kevin, he tried.
Yeah.
I just, I apologize, I just, this was on my to-do list today, and I didn't get to it.
Any other questions?
No, I think if, if, I, I think I agree with Larry, if, if going forward, I think, I think it's best that we get a couple of just estimates, but I understand it's a competitive market, they're a little busy right now, but, for now, I think we should, just, I agree, we should move forward with this one.
Okay. All right, uh, well, if there's no more questions, why don't we go ahead and vote, um, all in favor of approving the, uh, bid for the tree removal for Vital House Tree Service, say aye.
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 All right, um, next up would be, uh, number five, um, is the resignation of Gene Anderson on the planning commission. He, uh, surprised us all, um, we made it through the entire meeting, and at, at the end he goes, "Well, I guess this is a better time than not, and he told us that he was resigning," so, um, we weren't ready for it, but, you know, he's served the community for a long time, he's done a lot of great things, and he's helped us, and, and he has a lot of knowledge, so we thank him. Um, he did send us a, a quick email letting us know that he was resigning, um, so I, I personally thank him, and, and, uh, I'm sure he'll still be popped around to give Elizabeth some, some grief every once in a while, so, but, um.
He dropped off his paperwork, his book and everything, and he didn't even put a bow on it.
So, um, we do have to, I guess, approve that resignation, so I'll need a motion and a second.
I'll make the motion to approve, uh, resignation for Gene Anderson.
I'll second.
Any more discussion, and would you like to say anything?
Well, I'd just like to say it's, it's tough to lose good people, um, that have done a great job over the years, but, you know, it comes a time where, you know, you say enough is enough, so, you know, I'm sure that, um, the, the planning commission will continue on, uh, doing the good work of the city and, um, and being, you know, an advisory commission to the city council. I wish Gene good luck, he's a terrific guy and, you know, a real asset to the community.
Thank you. Troy?
Yeah, uh, I was at that, at that meeting, at that commission meeting, and he, he actually had a very inspirational, um, parting, I guess, because he turned to the rest of the commission and, and just applauded them for starting to do the difficult work that he knew they needed to do, and he knew that needed to be done. He said he, you know, he, he gets upset when we talk about doing stuff and, and nobody follows through, and he just was really complimentary of the commission about going forward and, um, just rolling up their sleeves and getting to work, and then he said, "But I'm not." and then he said, "But I know." That's kind of cool, but he's just, he knows it's gonna be a lot of work, he knows it's gonna be a lot of difficult work, and he just, you know, just didn't feel like he was up to it, and for 15 years, I don't, I don't begrudge that at all, so. And thank you for your service.
Tim?
I agree with what everybody said, and Gene is an interesting character, I'll miss that, but we'll still see him around town, and he never doubted where his heart was, it was for Taylor's Falls, so applauding for his service to our community.
All right, well, let's go ahead and vote, all those in favor of accepting Gene's resignation, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Now, moving on, we will go to number six, which would be approval of Sandra Berg joining the planning commission. We do have our application, so I'll need a motion in a second, and we can discuss and move from there.
Well, I'll make the motion to accept.
I'll second.
Sandra Berg.
All right, any discussion?
Yeah, a question, are we deciding to put Sandra on the planning commission? Is that what the intention is here?
Yeah.
Okay, so I do have a comment. At our January organizational meeting, we appoint members to the commissions, and since it's December, you know, we're less than a month away from that meeting, and since we just accepted Gene's resignation, I'm wondering if it wouldn't be a better idea to post it for interest in case anybody else were interested and make the decision on who we would like to see on the planning commission at our January meeting.
Makes sense. Larry, agree with Tim? Sure.
Yeah, I, I guess I just don't want to, I don't want to get in the way of somebody who's motivated and ready to step up and help the city, so I will, you know, I guess I can't agree with that at this point. I think if we get applications from people who come in and they want to join the commission, there's, we, I don't think it behooves the council to be standing in their way.
And I guess my point is, the community doesn't know that Gene, a lot of the community doesn't know that Gene resigned, and they wouldn't have an opportunity, and it's less than 30 days away when we make the appointment, so. That would be my own, nothing against Sandra, I should do a fine job, I'm sure, but I just, being December, and we meet in January to do this, it seems best to give other people an opportunity to apply if they want to, and if they don't, Sandra's it, take her, so. That was my rationale.
Yeah, no, actually, that sounds good, I agree with you. We might as well wait till January, posting all of our other commissions at the same time, however, we've got some vacancies to fill there, so.
Yeah, I think we should get it on the front page of our website, whatever openings we have for commissions, and make a special note for planning that there's been a resignation, and we'll be filling that in Jan, also, whatever in January we'll be filling, so.
And I believe we have nine days to fill them.
When's their next meeting? Is it, they meet, is it before, or?
So we went to the last Monday of the month.
They went to the last Monday, not the first, okay, all right. You know, I'm excited to have somebody apply, we've had a couple of the day, so having applications. I'm all for Sandra joining, obviously, I'm not gonna try to force a vote here, because it would go half and half, and then she wouldn't get to join, so I wouldn't want to do that, and I think you're right, I think posting it wouldn't hurt, and if anybody else comes in, we have a couple of weeks, and we can decide that, and maybe we can put an ad in the paper too, for all our commissions, for those that get the paper, they'd be able to see what we're looking forward to, because we do have lots of openings, so. Do we, do we want to postpone and then just vote on that on January 8th then?
Table it.
Yeah, technically, we table it. Actually, I don't think it's a table, because that would be brought up later, is that correct? It's postponed to a definite period of time?
That's the same thing.
That's table?
Yes, same way. If you postpone it to a definite time or indefinite, but you're putting it on the table.
Okay.
Yeah, I just want to make sure it's part of our organizational meeting, not to delay any, any order, which would, somebody of us kind of get that person on the first meeting of the year.
Okay. I, I will let her know too, I'll give her a call and let her know where we're at, but we'll just need a vote to postpone. Any decisions made for the planning commission until our January 8th?
Do we need an amended motion for that?
I would think not.
Okay.
All right, so we just will move on, we won't vote.
Okay.
And I'll let her know, and then coming eighth, we'll finish up our organizational meeting, hopefully we have tons of applicants, so. Moving right along, let go ahead and, let's see, discuss Diane Nelson for the EDC application. We have multiple openings, EDC has not been able to meet since, we met February this year. It's the only meeting we had, and we did not have a quorum, and so right now, it's just been myself that's been showing up, and so Diane has expressed a lot of interest, she's been working with the school as well, trying to figure out safe places to school. She's already contacted the county, and we're having a meeting next week just to discuss grant opportunities as well, so she really has shown a lot of interest in joining EDC. Because we have multiple openings on the EDC, I believe that we should go ahead and forward with probably accepting Diane to join the team, because it's just her and me, we still won't be able to have a quorum nor a meeting yet, but at least we have one position filled and three to fill, so. I don't think we need to move that one to the organizational meeting, unless you guys want to do that, just because we're setting standard, I'm fine with that too.
I was hoping you'd say this would give you a quorum, so you could meet.
Yeah, no, unfortunately it won't, well, it could, I can, I'll continue reaching out to our one existing member that's been semi-involved, Brett Lincoln of the brewery, he is still on it, but I have heard from him for a while, his work has been taking him on a lot of traveling, so I'll reach out and see if he wants to continue being on the EDC. If not, then we have another opening, but right now, no, we wouldn't be able to unless he could make it. When does the EDC meet again? We're doing the second Tuesday of the month is what we've been doing, but we were gonna start talking about if we should move that or not. We might move it closer to the end, so that we can have a report of anything done closer to a city council meeting, so.
Are you gonna be meeting, you won't be meeting then the rest of this month?
Yeah, no, we don't have any meetings this month, and I guess we, our first meeting will be in January, so, depending on.
Just be consistent?
Yeah.
Let's just be consistent, okay, if this would've got you to a quorum, I might feel differently.
Okay, yep.
Being so shorthanded as it is already, but since it doesn't, I, we're probably best off just. Okay, we can tell Gene to postpone the call.
Sure. Let's just go ahead and postpone that, then we can make that decision on January 8th, and then during that time, I'll also reach out to Brett, make sure that he still wants to be a part of it, if he does, great, we can remove him too and start looking for his replacement.
Well, it shows his term expires the end of this year.
Oh, is it on there, okay.
Yeah, I looked at our organizational meeting from earlier this year, and. Yeah, so Brett Lincoln's term expires 2020, 12/31/2023, so.
Okay. Well, there we go, that's just one, so.
Sorry.
No?
It's a little under four.
Our last, but not least, item for tonight's discussion will be number eight, discussing Elizabeth House, setting a date for her six-month performance review. When was, your six-month is past, wasn't it the beginning of this month?
I started June 20th, so.
June 20th? Yeah, okay, so I knew we were coming up, so we're not obviously gonna be on, well, I shouldn't say that. If you guys want to meet on the 20th of December, we could go right on, so it's, I'm open for days, so.
And Tim, do we have to do a six-month, or are we just two reviews within one year?
The Personnel Policy Manual states that any new appointment has a probationary period of one year, and a performance review conducted at six months and then 12 months. Yeah.
So I'll throw that up, since I, I'm not going anywhere, so, I mean, I know we're going in the holiday season, and if you guys would like to do December 20th, I'd be fine with that, and I think almost any time of the day works for me on that date, so.
What day of the week is that, Larry?
Wednesday.
Wednesday.
I'll be here.
You okay with it? All right, then. 6:00 AM? Yeah.
These guys don't keep me here, no.
Does that work for you?
Yep.
Ms. Mary, just want you to know that when they stay early in the morning, they do early.
My early in the morning has changed dramatically over the last two years.
Depends on how much you want me to talk, and more talking, the more you have to do.
I'm good with that.
So it would be a date?
Well, I mean, I can like do it at 4:30, like we did today, so I'm open to 4:30, unless you guys want to do it earlier, it's up to you.
I might have a conflict, I might need to be in Burnsville at 5:00.
Okay, we can do it in the morning, but.
And we want to do it like 9:00 AM?
9 o'clock is good with me.
Okay.
Okay. Tim?
Yep.
That works.
And I'll get it packed itself like I did for Kevin's.
Yeah, that'd be great, yeah, thank you. Okay, so Elizabeth, it's up to you, you can choose to have it open, or you can have it closed, like Kevin did, so it's your call, so it's not something that we can.
Okay, close is fine.
Okay. Prince, is there anything else that I'm supposed to add to that, just so?
Just to direct clerk to post?
Yep, yep. So 12/20, 9:00 AM, closed meeting.
Okay.
For the review of Elizabeth House's six-month review. Okay. Well, doesn't anybody else like to say anything? Prince, you got off easy today, didn't have to do much talking there, you had your, you drank those.
I'm so sorry, I was all hipped up.
I'd just like to say thank you, we made it a year together, and it's been an honor, and we're making really great steps, we got a full office, everybody's working hard, thank you to all the residents that have been involved in keeping us in line, and I wish everybody a happy holiday, Merry Christmas, and I would like somebody to motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor of Sandra?
Aye.
Aye.
We ate so much barbecue in the last two days that I'm sorry. Every time they took us somewhere, it was like, let's go. My son went on, our middle one went on a baseball. Brendan, one of their stops was Kansas City.
I'm gonna introduce myself to you.
He said.